Alright, I think we're on.
Yeah, I think we are too.
Good morning, I'd like to call the August nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, City Council Meeting to Order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bush?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Dave Line?
Here.
Proit?
Here.
Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, and this morning's prayer is given by Gary Gedding with Hutchinson Friends Church. Good morning, thanks for being here.
Good morning, I'm glad to be here. Shall we pray together? Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this community in which we live, we're grateful for these who serve us in this chamber and throughout our community in various ways. We ask for your watchful care over each one and for your guidance and direction. And may your good blessing continue to remain on our city, for I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Alright, next item is the time where we take public comment that is not on the agenda. We ask that people generally come to the podium and state your name and address and please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience this morning that would like to address the council? And did he give, he gave you the mic? Okay, you're, you're up.
My name's Hank Olivera, I have Hutch Taxi, I live at six oh nine Bull Hill Road. And I'm here on an issue that I don't understand, that I have to carry a license and I've been doing it for twenty years. And now people can just come in here and run a business without a license, which this is involving the bus station across the street. And I'm having a really fight, and I've been accused of criminal trespassing because I can't get in there and get my clients off, off the yard, he's kicking us around. Yeah? Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind maybe recap maybe the people, I don't assume any of that picked up.
I'm Hank Olivera, and I've been with Hutch Taxi for twenty years. Back in ninety-four, I took it over from the Hutchison when they didn't want it, so I was the guy they dumped it on. And they said I'd kind of take the money and run. But right now, I've worked really hard for twenty years to build a business. And I got a little business built over in regards using the bus station. And now I've been attacked by the owners of the bus station, which are taking my clients. And they seem to say there's nothing I can do, they can run a transportation service without a license. I don't get it. I'm paying twenty years and I've been paying a license and I can't get it stopped.
Okay, Hank, just to clarify, when you say the bus, I guess I'm, I may be disagreeing to it. I know there's a bus that comes over here to the Zip Trip, but it goes like on to Colorado. Is that the bus you're speaking of?
We're talking about Beeline Express, it comes up into here four times a day. Okay, they come in here at five thirty in the morning, and they come in here at three thirty in the afternoon, seven forty-five and one thirty in the morning. And I have clients that I, that meet me at the bus and I take them to a yard in South Hutch to pick up buses to deliver. And what I, what's happening is the owner there is taking my clients now. He's kicked me off the property and threatened me with criminal trespassing. And now I have to go to court as a criminal for trying to do my job. So I can't get on the yard, get on the yard. And I don't think it's right. And they say he can run that business without a license. I don't understand.
Okay.
So maybe you can clarify that for me.
And, and I apologize, this is the first time I'm hearing anything about this. Is this something you've had any discussions with city staff on?
Yes, with the city attorney.
Okay, maybe we can discuss a little bit more and get back with you and try to clarify things. Do we have Ms. Olivera's contact information?
I've met with Mr. Olivera.
Oh, okay.
I've met with all the parties involved. The city does not have jurisdiction over inner-city travel. When you go from Hutch to South Hutch, we don't have jurisdiction over that. Or Hutch to Wichita or any other city. With on the streets of Hutchinson, we have that authority. I've had a long discussion with Mr. Olivera about that. I advised him, number one, to obey the law, number two, to see your own attorney about that. Now, Mr. Olivera apparently has a matter before the Hutch Municipal Court, which the City Council does not address. The Hutch Municipal Court addresses those matters. It's been explained to him, he just doesn't like the response.
Okay, can you, can you answer just the one, one aspect of if he's stating that he's buying a licensing, a license?
His licensing is on, is on the streets of Hutchinson, from location to location in Hutchinson. If that's what they were doing, there'd be an unlicensed taxi service, but that's not what they're doing. They pick them up here and they take them to South Hutch, and we don't have jurisdiction over that.
If you would like to address the council, we're gonna ask that you come to the podium and please state your name and address. And again, limit your comments to no more than five minutes.
Hutch Taxi hired me to work for them. And as my job, I go to the Zip Trip to pick up clients because they call us for us to pick them up. She blocks the bus with her van, grab their luggage, and throw them in her car. And don't even give them a chance to say who they want to go with. And that's not right.
Okay, these sound like they're, they're issues I, I don't think we're gonna be able to resolve here today. You know, with hearing about it for the first time, we can maybe have further discussion with, with the legal counsel and see if there's any aspect of that that's not okay, but otherwise it sounds like it's just a competition of business.
Yeah, there was a bus, a student going to college here, got off the bus, and he asked to ride with us. They evicted him out the lot, made him stand in the street. You want people to come to this town to be treated like that? Wow.
Okay, Ms. Olivera, it sounds like Mr. Brown has your contact information, so, so we can discuss a little bit further and then make contact back to you.
Yeah, but from the time this is Hutchinson, time to get to City Line, that is transporting, right?
I'm not sure, as I said, this is the first time I'm hearing of this, this situation and I'm not sure if I full, understand it in full. So I'll, I'll discuss with Mr. Brown and we'll get back with you and see if there's anything that can be done. So, Mr. Brown, do you have his contact information?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? Seeing none, will the clerk please, please call the next item.
Item five A through E, consent agenda.
I move to approve this consent agenda as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Proit?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six A, consider twenty thirteen annual audit report.
Good morning, Frank Edwards, Director of Finance for the city. Last week, each of you were given a copy of the City of Hutchinson's two thousand thirteen annual financial report. This report was, this audit was performed by the firm of Lindberg, Vogel, Pierce, and Ferris Chartered. The audit opinion concludes that the city's financial statements are fairly presented in all material aspects. I've got with me today Randy Hoffmeyer, who is the Audit Manager, and he'll explain the audit process a bit for you and be able to answer any questions you may have.
First, I want to recognize the city for preparing their annual financial report. And the, and to actually recognize the Finance Department for preparing the annual financial report for the third consecutive year. What I want to discuss is the audit opinion, and then I want to spend a little bit of time discussing the single audit process and what's involved with the single audit. The independent auditors' report in the first paragraph identifies the financial statement that's being reported on, which is the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. The report also addresses management's responsibility for the financial statement, including, excuse me, including maintaining internal controls over financial reporting. It also identifies the auditor's responsibility, which is to obtain audit evidence and to express an opinion on the financial statement. It also addresses what standards are used in performing the audit. Based on our audit, we have issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statement, which is a clean opinion. Now I want to turn your attention to the single audit process and what's involved with it. A single audit, or O M B A one thirty-three audit, is an audit of an entity's federal financial assistance, assistance programs or grants. And this type of audit is required when an entity has expenditures that are combined for all federal programs that exceed five hundred thousand dollars. The next step in our single audit process that's required by O M B circular A one thirty-three is to determine what federal awards are to be audited, or what federal awards are considered major programs. And these programs are selected based on their size and their risk. After determining the major programs, compliance and internal, internal controls are tested in certain areas that are called compliance requirements. And there's fourteen different compliance requirements that, depending on what programs are selected for testing, then you, it may, it depends on the, whether there's any direct or material effect on, on that program, whether or not you test that compliance requirement. There are two additional reports in addition to the independent auditor's report on the financial statement that are included as a result of having a single audit. The first is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters based on an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And then the second report is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal program and the internal control over compliance required by O M B circular A one thirty-three. In those reports, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified. There are no findings, questioned costs, or non-compliance reported. Also included as a result of the single audit process are certain schedules. The first schedule is, is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which this schedule lists each federal program of the entity and the amount of federal awards expended during the year. The next schedule is the schedule of findings and questioned costs. This, as the name implies, includes findings and questioned costs of the financial statement and financial assistance programs. And it also identifies which programs were selected as major programs. This year, in, for two thousand thirteen, the city had one major program, which was the Airport Improvement Program. And then the last schedule is the schedule of prior audit findings. And because the city had no audit findings in the two thousand and twelve audit, this report just simply states that there were no prior audit findings. If there had been prior audit findings, we would have been required to follow up and address those. I want to thank the Finance Department and the other departments for their assistance during the audit. Do you have any questions?
Well, just to kind of make this simple for the layperson like me, so what you're really telling us is that in two twelve and also now two thirteen, we had what you call a clean audit?
Correct.
So there were no deficiencies, no concerns, no errors that you identified, no problems, no mishandling or misapplication of funds, to the best of your knowledge?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Good job, Frank, to you and your team.
Yeah, I'd say that's where we like it to be, Frank.
I know that isn't always the case in, in local government, so.
With that, we would like to recommend that the council accept the audit as presented.
Okay, I will move to accept the twenty thirteen annual audit report as presented.
We have a, we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Proit?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six B, consider twenty fifteen budget.
Okay, I'm, I'm here representing a memo that John Dirdoff wrote to the council and I'll, I'll summarize that for, for you guys. The City Council conducted formal budget hearings for the two thousand fifteen proposed budget on the August fifth, two thousand fourteen council meeting. During that public hearing, staff presented highlights of the proposed budget and associated property tax rate needed to fund the budget proposal. No pub, no public comments were received during the formal hearing. The proposed budget calls for an increase in the mill levy rate of one point seven two four. The council held its fifth budget study session on August the fourteenth, resulting in no changes from the published budget discussed during the August fifth budget hearing. The two thousand fourteen mill rate was forty-one point four eight five, and the two thousand fifteen proposed rate is forty-three point two oh nine. The assessed value used for the two thousand fifteen budget was two hundred and ninety million dollars, which represents a three point three five percent increase over last year's assessed valuation of two hundred and eighty-one million, resulting in a proposed mill rate increase of one point seven four based on the budget. Overall, general fund expenses are up two point six percent from last year's budget. Attached is the budget certificate representing the proposed budget, which we'll need to file with the state by August the twenty-fifth. The council can lower the budget as reflected in this certificate, but it cannot increase it without another public hearing. The budget proposed reflects all of the changes and discussions the council's had over the past sixty days. The two thousand fifteen budget will allow the city to maintain the current level of services and provide some additional investment in the street program. Some of the highlights include the mill levy increase of one point seven two four, the assessed valuation growth of three point three five, the increase in street funding program of four hundred thousand dollars, a merit step increase budgeted for all eligible employees, health insurance costs increase of five percent, and one point two five new employee positions, although there was a net budget decrease of two point two five with the transition of some Fund Valley responsibilities over to the Rec Commission. There were no increases this, this year or last year in the water and sewer rates. At this point, we would recommend the approval of the two thousand fifteen budget as presented.
Alright. Do we have, have a motion to, to approve it?
I would move to approve the proposed twenty fifteen budget.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion regarding the budget?
I had one thing I wanted to bring up. Okay, maybe a couple things, well, I, there are probably items in this budget that each of us disagree with and obviously we're not gonna be like Congress and not pass a budget. But I did want to bring up one of the ideas that was floated around in last week's budget session, and that was the idea about bringing in an outs, an outside efficiency expert in municipal government. And I apologize, I forgot John wasn't gonna be here because I certainly want his opinion on this. But it seems to me that that might be a good idea, although I know it would require a capital outlay. I think it would be a good investment, and I say that in no way to disparage the work that the department heads are doing or the city manager or the staff, because we have an outstanding, outstanding staff of city employees. But I think that this type of analysis, department by department, would be helpful for any organization every several years. And just looking at our mill levy in relation to communities our size that surround us, it's obvious that, because it is so much higher, that maybe we're providing a much higher level of services, or perhaps our salaries or staffing levels are off in a way that isn't really obvious to us, or maybe the bill-back formula from the county for services or other communities isn't where it should be. We don't know, you know, and so I, I really feel that we could benefit from a study like that. And I don't know how we would go about starting that, or what that would cost, or, or what everybody feels about doing that.
So are you kind of just proposing that we look into, like, who could do this and what kind of cost?
Yeah, and obviously I'm not, it, it wouldn't impact this budget at all. But maybe in, in the next year, I don't.
Well, if I could just jump in, I mean, I appreciate that support. I brought that up at the, at the study session, and I think that's something that'd be worth looking further into. I mean, I'd like to suggest that we contact the city manager when he returns and see if we can't set up a, a, a council meeting to discuss this in greater detail and to get his opinion, and also get the input of the department heads to see what the value of this, you know, concept might be, as well as the potential cost. But I would like to set a date, not sometime in the future, discuss it.
Okay, would you, would you like to wait until John's around and have his calendar?
That, that's exactly what I was thinking, but I do, like I, like I said, I feel terrible about even bringing it up when John isn't here. I'd forgotten, but I did want to bring it up while the budget was fresh. And, and the fact that we are proposing an increase, I, I think it's easier to swallow if we're also looking at ways that we can gain efficiency and, and perhaps it'll come back and say we're doing everything right. And I think that could be a benefit too, you know, but if there are other, other ways we could.
And John, John's expected back in the office tomorrow, is that correct? Okay, I will contact John tomorrow and, and see what dates might be out there, and then we'll just maybe get those out to everybody and see, yeah, see if we can all come to a date that we might be able to get, get a meeting on, on the calendar and discuss this.
I, I would just add though Jade, you've apologized about three times for this.
Yeah.
You know, city staff, department heads are professionals, they're used, they have their budgets reviewed every single year. They're under a valuation by the city manager and the city council, and this is our responsibility to ask hard questions. And, and I don't think any, any department head that's not used to having their budget scrutinized and their decisions scrutinized, I don't know how they got to be department head.
Well, thank you, Bob.
I'll tell you.
Jade, if I could, just a side note, when you're comparing mill rates, city to city or community, community to community, you need to understand as well that a mill rate in one location may not generate as much revenue as a mill rate in another, in another location.
And that would be one reason that the consultant could come in and do, because we do continue to talk about, you know, what's Newton's, you know, mill levy. Well, that has nothing to do with our mill levy, because they have a different sales tax, they have a different valuation of property, they have different responsibilities. I mean, there's a lot into this, and people have a tendency to just say, oh, mill levy, mill levy, we're high. That's not necessarily the case. Maybe it is the case, and that's where an outside independent consultant could come in and maybe shed some light on where we really stand in relationship to our neighbors and the economy.
And educate the public as well, I mean, not just us, but, you know, have that piece, well, this is why, this is the amount of money that a mill generates in this community as opposed to Salina, and that's why our city is fifteen mills higher than their city mill. I mean, those type of conversations.
I think that could be really beneficial, that, that educational piece, to help people understand why, why is it so? And, and exactly that, not comparing maybe apples to oranges and having a little better basis. Okay, is that the only, the only thing, or you have?
Yes, no, that's it, thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? Do we have anyone in the public that would like to address the council on the budget? Hearing and seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Proit?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item six C, consider design services agreement with Mann and Company for Orchard Park Phase Three improvements.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. This item is for Phase Three A of the development of Orchard Park. It's primarily a roadway that will go from the existing parking lot to the pond near the back of the park. There'll be a loop towards the back. It'll provide some access to the pond, also access to future development of the park, as well as some parking. The contract agreement for the design services is for forty, two thousand two hundred and forty. The total cost of Phase, of Phase Three A, so including construction, is estimated at six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine seventy. This project is in the two thousand fifteen budget, so the budget that was just passed. The reason I'm doing this today is to kind of get a head start, so we'll get this designed hopefully by the end of November, have it bid out in the winter and be ready to go first thing in the spring. So it's a, a little early, I understand, but because we already have a project open, I wanted to kind of, kind of get ahead of the game. We did not bid this out. We've had, or all the previous phases have been designed by Mann and Company. We've had outstanding results from them, and we're confident in their ability and with their knowledge, the project, we decided just to move forward with Mann and Company. So it is my recommendation to approve this contract as presented, and I will stand for any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Any comments?
The only comment I would make is, I've heard the only complaint about the park has been the limited amount of parking. And I think that's great.
Yes.
That's a great problem for us to have.
Yeah.
How many parking spaces, I mean, I don't, I hate to hit you with the nitty-gritty question, but how many parking spaces are we gonna get to about when this is, when this phase is completed? Just a guesstimate, Justin.
Um, well, because it's not designed, we're not a hundred percent sure. The conceptual design probably shows, I mean, I would guess in the thirty to forty range of additional parking. We are also, and not to spend too much time here, but we're also actually doing Phase Four right now, so we jumped ahead, which is an extension of the parking lot. We did that to save some mobilization cost. Phase One had parking lot, Phase Four had parking lot, we kind of merged the two together. So we're actually right now constructing more parking lot in that front area. And that, hopefully that'll be done in the next, probably six weeks or less, depending on weather. So we'll have additional parking up front, but then when this is completed, we'll have probably additional, I'd say thirty to forty, depending on how much we can afford. I'll put as much in there as we can afford, because it is a, it is a very popular park right now, so.
Well, the other thing I was just gonna suggest is, I mean, I've been back there several times, and there's a lot of room back there.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no reason why we couldn't, you know, level off an area for kind of dirt parking.
Right.
I mean, this is, this is Hutch, where there's a lot of pickup trucks. That, that works just fine for a lot of us.
Yeah, as, as we get into the design of this phase, we can definitely look into that to see if there's a, a spot we can build for auxiliary parking or, or additional parking in the future. If it becomes a problem, we have a space already designed for, for an additional asphalt lot if needed, so, yeah, we can look into that.
I mean, but I'm not talking about a design phase, I'm talking about somebody with a truck just leveling the ground.
Just leveling it off.
So people can park.
Well, yeah, we can do that.
Well, I mean, just as we talk about parties being there, I mean, thirty to forty spots gets filled up pretty quickly if you're having two birthday parties there with kids. Well, I mean, just as we talk about parties being there, I mean, thirty to forty spots gets filled up pretty quickly if you're having two birthday parties there with kids and family. So that's just something I was just thinking about, because that's a big issue, at least currently. So, thank you. Otherwise, I think it looks great.
Thank you.
Justin, just a separate question to this design program. But since the park has opened up, any particular hiccups with the operation of it and its function?
No, things have been going extremely smooth. I anticipated the newness of the playground to wear off by now, but it's not, which is, which is great. And I mean that as far as the number of people we're seeing. I mean, you can still go, if you go this morning, you know, parking lot's probably close to full. And we do have, we are going to shut the park, or the playground down for probably two days. We have a punch list item through our manufacturer, and it's nothing major. It's just, you know, there's a couple spots in the safety material, the rubberized material that was installed incorrectly, so they're going to correct that. There's some cracks in the sidewalks that are going to be, going to be fixed, and all that's under warranty, so, but.
Procedurally, what time are we closing the park?
All the parks close. I believe it's at eleven P M. or ten P M., I'd have to look at the ordinance. We do not have a gate on that, and we've talked about putting a gate. Or maybe there's a gate there, but we're not closing it, I'd have to look at it, but as of right now, we are not gating it off. If it becomes an issue, we can, we can definitely look into that, because it is secluded, I could see that becoming an attract, especially once this back road is built, you know, if we get fishing, people want to fish overnight. That's something we can address, or we can at least ask P D. to have a presence in the park if that becomes an issue, so.
Well, I've actually seen the, I mean, I live right by there, so I've seen the police department up there going into the park and coming out. Troy, you're here, is that part, are you making that part of your routine patrol up in that area? Or is this just that the officer has time and he's available there, or how's that being handled, I guess?
We've not had any issues up at that park. I know that my guys, you know, frequent the park periodically just to have a presence there, but I think that we'll continue that.
Okay.
So.
Good, thank you.
They like the dragon.
Yeah, and I was hoping our two-day repair shutdown won't be over Labor Day.
Oh, absolutely not. We've actually been waiting. You know, the Hutchison schools have already gone back, we're waiting for the Bueller kids to go back, because that's technically in the Bueller district. So we'll pick a time during the middle of the week, after everybody's back in school, that will be hopefully as least disruptive as we can, so.
Well, I think, I think parents with children will appreciate not arriving at the park to have it closed.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do everything we can to, you know, put it out in the media and Facebook and all the avenues we have available to let people know that it's going to be closed, but I'm sure there will be people that show up, so.
Okay. Do we have, I don't think we've gotten to this point, do we have a motion to approve the plan?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the proposal for planning services of Mann and Company as presented by staff.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, would the clerk, clerk, please call the roll?
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Proit.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item seven, report of city officials.
All right, let's start down there with you, John. Do you have anything this morning?
Nothing there, thank you.
Okay, Jade?
I do have a few things, and I thought this was covered in the last meeting, but perhaps it hasn't been. I continue to receive negative feedback about a potential change to a three-lane configuration on Main Street. And John Deardoff had mentioned to the council that this was merely one concept that was proposed in a session, a, not a task force, but some kind of focus group. I don't know if we can put that issue to rest, if anybody can speak on that. I don't mind getting letters constantly and emails. I enjoy hearing from you, but I just don't want to continue, I don't want people to continue to be worried about that if it's not even a concern. Can anybody speak to that, or maybe John can talk to Ken tomorrow about?
I think that's going to have to be something that John brings forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the problem that we're in is that they put this, these concepts out there, you know, different ideas that could happen, and there were some very negative reactions to some of those. And then at the next step of the phase is when they, I think, would meet to all say, okay, well, we don't want to do this, or we do want to push ahead before bringing it to council. So I think they're kind of, I mean, I think right now it's just open for people to comment, and Jade, I would agree with you that I've gotten a lot of very negative criticism about the idea of moving the streets smaller. I don't see that happening, but I think we have to hear officially back from John and the focus group.
Yeah, aren't we supposed to ultimately get certain recommendations?
Yeah, everything's going to come to council.
Come to the council.
Yeah, everything's going to come to council.
Based on that study and that analysis, so that would be the time to officially.
Right, and what's going to come back to council, I think, is their recommendation on what we should do after getting all the same feedback that we've received, and then that will all be put together and sent to us.
That makes sense.
Right, but I do think John has somewhat addressed that we will not be going to a three-lane. And as you said, I think maybe just to put people at rest, because I think this is a group of people who are very much in arms, up in arms and concerned, and think that even though they've sent a letter, that they've got to continue to be very diligent and watching this, and so, yeah, if they could just rest easy and not feel like someone's going to come in and do something while they're not watching.
However, it is interesting that I've gotten more emails and complaints about the three, the three-lane concept from four than I did about a one point seven four mill levy increase.
I thought the same thing, Bob. I thought the same thing.
And I think that's just.
So you can mess with my money, but don't mess with my streets.
Or my pets.
I was just going to say, don't bring dogs in.
That's right. My pickup truck and my dog.
Another thing I wanted to bring up is an article about housing starts that ran in the Hutch News last week, cited a developer who mentioned that changes to building codes have added thousands to the cost of building a new home in the past few years. Now, I don't doubt that assessment, but it was my understanding that the international building codes that we adopt are pretty standard across the board in most communities, and I know that we even eliminate some of those regulations prior to adoption. I don't see Jana here, but I guess I was just wanting confirmation that this is not unique to Hutchinson, because the way it was presented is that Hutchinson is maybe not attractive or somehow putting undue stress on builders by adopting new standards. Trent?
Trent Maxwell, building official, the codes are actually in my department, and they are not unique. They're international codes adopted all over the world. The year of the code is the only thing that does change. We are on the two thousand twelve. Many cities in Kansas are going to the twelve, a lot of them are on the six and the nine. So it's just a matter of time where the code, like what we were on, becomes obsolete, technology changes. A lot of contractors and manufacturers want to submit new product, and our old code didn't even address any of that. So that's part of the reason why people do choose newer codes, is it addresses things that are changing, so.
So is it, is it accurate that the newest code is probably added quite a bit to the cost of building? I mean, the cost of doing business in any industry continues to rise, but.
There's pros and cons with everything. I think the residential did have some added costs that were not ever required before. Commercial, I saw some savings with our development. I don't know any way around them. Some of them are life safety things to do with electrical, tamper-resistant receptacles, as much as even I don't like them. That's something that's there, even the state fire marshal adopted those, and that's a cost that was increased, and no one had a say about it. So there are some things residential that just unfortunately wasn't added cost, yes.
Well, I appreciate your input on that.
Okay, so just so I can sleep tonight, what's a tamper-resistant receptacle?
The prongs go in at the same time, so you can't put a single object, I assume, maybe a child.
Have a little kid with a screwdriver?
Right.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And the last thing I had is a question about next year's contract with South Hedge for fire services. I know that we just now passed this year's budget, but I just want to bring that up every few meetings, I guess, because we can't afford to let time get away from us. Probably need to begin negotiating that next year's contract now if we're going to make major changes to it, so.
And I do believe a letter has gone to South Hedge and asking for some kind of response. So, and I am not sure, we'll need to check with John. I think it was November timeframe. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the timeframe as to when we're to hear back, so we will keep asking.
Great, that's all I have, thank you.
Bob, do you have anything this morning?
No, I guess I would just note for people that city manager John Deardoff's not here today because his daughter Lacey underwent some significant, I don't think, I shouldn't say life-threatening surgery, but some, a repair of her, I don't know, some sort of a repair, some medical condition. But just that our thoughts and prayers are with her. I know that people have been following that story in the news, and she seems to be doing very well, and it's just a blessing for John and his family that she's doing as well as she is. So the community should keep John and his family and their thoughts and prayers, and that's all I have.
Thanks. Nancy?
Just a reminder that school zones are back in effect.
What's your point?
People watch people speeding up and down Adams.
Absolutely.
I knew you were going to say something about my driving. I haven't been following. I don't drive fast, you drive slow.
Okay, and is that all you have this morning?
That's all.
Well, my complaint of the morning ties nicely with that. It is kind of that season again, and my annual complaint is the parking there on Severance Street at Seventeenth and Severance. There is a no parking sign, there is yellow on the curb, and yet four or five cars continually park there, which the problem becomes that because they're parked there, as you're heading northbound on Severance Street, it, at the intersection, it goes into a turn lane, so people coming into that, what should be their lane, have no lane. And so they're forced to go into the other lane, which, on the occasion that there's a car already there, is going to be problematic. So if we could just respect that there are no parking signs. Yesterday in particular, there was, there were no cars on the east side of the street, and there were no cars on the north side of Seventeenth. So yesterday happened to just be a matter of no one wanted to walk five more feet. But there are occasions, I know, where it's very difficult to park, but nonetheless, if we could respect the no parking signs, they're there for a reason, and so maybe, maybe keep a little more safety at hand, and that's all I have. So with that, do we have, well, we don't have a report from city manager. Paul, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm doing just fine, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bush?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Proit.
Yes.